And if anybody comes online, Mr. Grip or whoever, they'll just yell at me if you're listening now, just yell and say you're on. Okay, so first, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming, especially for most people in here. Dale's our, well, most people. There's food in the back. Have at it, coffee, do what you do. Counsel up here, get up and go as you please, and we'll just try and kind of maneuver. I don't need to tell you where restrooms are and things like that. So everybody knows, it's kind of a work session here today. And the next couple Saturdays, we'll be together on the wonderful winter time. But first, I want to thank city administrator, our staff, the finance folks, and everybody else for putting our little books together as they usually do here in packets for us and providing the information so we can halfway look intelligent up here. So thank you for doing that and appreciate all the work. And, you know, everybody heard, at least most of the folks sitting here, heard Tuesday, the audit's view of how we're doing business, and that's a wonderful thing. So again, thank you on that. And then we're here to discuss kind of how we're moving forward for the next two years. So welcome the counsel back that are coming back, and welcome the new counsel folks that are coming on. So here we are, new team, working together to the benefit of Davenport. So I'm going to go over a little, just reminders, reinforcements, whatever you want to call it, kind of things on how we do general decorum business here between us and anybody else. Kind of some of the things as people who have been here before, hear me read a little courtesy decorum things to the community when we start each meeting. Kind of along those same lines is really what I'm going to talk about for a few minutes, and then obviously I'll shut up and let the real people talk. So no particular order here, folks, but so we'll just ask, as quite frankly, we do 99.9% of the time, and I'm in the group that every now and then I have to be reinforced and reminded of things myself, and usually Ms. Spiegel and the city administrator or others will, after the meeting, tell me that. So appreciate that. So let's continue, I hope, the momentum of how we work together and the positive interactions we have, being courteous and respectful both to ourselves, to our particular staff members, and to the citizens. We set the example, and again, I thank you for how we've done business the last two years. I thank both the citizens and the staff and us, and how we've interacted with each other for the 99, again, percent of the time, majority of the time. Every now and then, we just have to pull back and remember why we're here and that we do set the example. So just a couple things to reinforce. Everybody, I think, up here understands our little button activity and how we speak. So I have my little screen, and I'm just saying this once, so everybody hears. Sometimes people ask me, "You got two screens there?" I've had citizens, "What are you looking at?" Well, you know, one's a kind of a view of you guys, even though I can see you, or it's how people see us up here. The other one's kind of, I have a screen with everybody, and I can kind of see when somebody wants to talk. So I literally watch that pretty, as best as I can, and it pops in when somebody wants to speak. So for folks up here, you guys know your buttons, just punch your button, and it'll tell me what number, and I'll call on you as the order you will, you know, jump in there for any particular time. We'll do, we'll just continue that, and we'll try and do most of our meetings, work sessions and/or council stuff here. So just do that, and I'll call on you. Generally, accepted decorum, each agenda item or each thing, everybody, to make sure we're fair, gets one time. Usually, usually, two times is acceptable, but particular kind of reply to something or something. Three times is really too many, although in my fault, I've allowed that, but we're going to try and now move forward. One time for sure, two times maybe, probably won't be three times, okay? For the whole point of, everybody gets a fair shot, okay? Please come prepared. Again, I'm speaking in the 99 percentile thing, and work with staff and work with respective alder folks. One thing I did kind of want to emphasize this time, I'd ask, please, if, and it's, and again, when I say "us," I mean me, myself, too. If there's a particular issue that's respective of a particular area, meaning ward, if Alderwoman Dickman has a particular agenda item that's in the second, and I have questions or concerns, I would hope that I would talk with her first, or anybody else in any other particular ward about that before I spring something up here. Same with me, I would ask that any of us, before we spring something up here, I would ask that you have a conversation. And I think I can say that the city administrator will continue her practice of allowing us to talk directly with the department heads, and she's given me that nod. So feel free to do that, talk with them as if you're talking with her. But if anybody is wanting to talk to someone below the department head level, one-on-one, I'd ask that you talk with that department head or Ms. Spiegel ahead of time, just so they understand what's going on, and quite frankly, that they can probably help you with that. So questions so far? Very good. And then I just have some notes I wrote, so I'm just going to read in particular, so I thank you. Our practice and protocol, we've done a great job, so we want to continue setting the example for our citizens and ourselves, and decorum, and how we do business really means a lot. So thank you for that. Be respectful of other times, be respectful of the ward folks. How we communicate to each other, especially here at the dais, is a big deal. One thing I'll ask is, as we communicate from here, we use titles. So I won't call, I hope I won't, and Ms. Spiegel, I say that a lot, but I'm going to try and say "city administrator," afterwards, say, "Hey, you know, I shouldn't be using her first name here." In your personal interactions, how you do, you do what you do, but up here, titles. Let's see. Give everybody a heads up, I talked about that. Focus on our lines, stay together, try and keep our national politics out of potholes. Potholes aren't Democrat or Republican, all right? Last time I checked. Or they might be independent, because they do their own thing, and sometimes we get after it, but let's focus on what we're doing, right? Kind of a joke, I hope you got that, but anyway. And then our dialogue with the folk, with the folks and our citizens, we, as you hear, as I read the little things every time at the meetings, we welcome people participating. But remember, public with business, at the end is, there's no dialogue. That's our time to listen to what people have to say to us. I'm going to concentrate on making sure that it just stays outside of the respective agenda, meaning that if you've heard me say, if there's an agenda item already on, that's their time to talk about the particular agenda item. If they want to talk about other stuff, so be it, have at it, but that's our time to listen, and then we'll just, you know, each person decide what they do with that, whether we take it to a staff or do whatever. So, and then at work sessions, like today, for example, we welcome people coming, and we have two of our usuals here, who probably will provide input to us at particular times, but no disrespect to work sessions, we will look at you and love you being here, but we won't dialogue with you, and we won't have you ask any questions. Obviously, during a council meeting, committee of the whole, you know, especially the two that are here, I think that's only two, I apologize, there's others. Not that everybody here isn't a citizen, I'm just talking about general public, right? So thank you. Oh, I apologize, there's one. Any questions on that? So I think, city administrator, anything else I should be hitting on? I think I'm pretty good. Anybody have any questions about that? Yes, ma'am?
This is very relief for me, and I want to thank Clay for fixing the light in the room, because they're brighter and I'll stay awake.
Oh, let's remember microphones, right? Is that what you're trying to tell me? Yeah, okay, fine.
All the records is dialed in, so you don't talk to your mic.
Roger that. Yep, we, those are little reminders we all have to do sometimes. Okay, cool. And just so people know, just so we say it one time, we can, everybody controls kind of their own mic. I try and watch if somebody doesn't, or if staff doesn't. The problem we have sometimes is I might override them, they might override me, because we're both trying to turn it on and off. But yeah. All right, anybody else? Mr. Grip, are you on? Can you hear me? Maybe not. All right.
Yes, I am on, and I can hear you.
Did you hear all those little comments? Any thoughts from you? I'll try and do better at, folks, just calling on you. Okay, good. All right, so again...
I'm tracking.
Good. My discipline is pausing, so. Okay, thanks, everyone. No questions, comments, general rural business. Again, communication's the key, being professional, positive, and again, 99% of the time, and on the rare occasions, I have to be talked to about that, and that's okay, and so have us, but we do a great job, let's continue to do that, presenting that positive impact. So, that being said, city administrator Spiegel, I think you'll carry on.
Yep, I will take the agenda from here. I will go through kind of a few contextual things, and then we'll get into the meat of it, so use your traditional decorum with the mayor if you need to chime in. He has, he wants to, or he can see who wants to talk, I can't, so we're going to teamwork our way through this. For perspective, and many of you have seen the pillars, you've become intimately familiar with them, you will be the fourth council that will kind of work with staff under this framework. And today is really focused on the very top of that, and the council's setting its goals for the next two years. But as you've seen through our communications, and even in the agenda items that appear on your agenda, everything your staff does ties back to at least one of these, and often more than one of these pillars. And Tom and I always joke that we could go through this very elaborate goal-setting process, and you will come back to these same six things. They might have substantially or not substantially different names, but at the end of the day, we are a local government, we are closest to the people, and these are the things that our government is charged with doing on behalf of our community. So as a, a little bit of a refresher for the previous council's goals, and I will talk a little bit here, and then why we're not going to do kind of the big, here's everything we did the last two years presentation. The previous council, the top priority was flood plan and resiliency, and in many ways in response to the 2019 flood. The previous council adopted the flood plan, and so now we operationalize that and march it forward. So that was a really big deal. I think from a staff perspective, we're incredibly proud of the amount of progress we made on all five of these items. The next, juvenile justice and support services, we were three councils into talking about juvenile crime and what we could do, and so the day we could make the announcement on the multi-jurisdictional partnership with Dear and United Way and Family Resources on opening the youth assessment program was, I think, truly historical for our community. We're several months into it, they're having their kind of management board meetings, and some really interesting and really great things are coming out of those dialogues, and we'll talk more about those in the future. But that, that was one where I felt we were treading a lot of water for a really long time, and to move it forward in the way we did, with the very positive reception that I received, I think is truly something the council should be very proud of. Sustainable infrastructure and infrastructure investment, I think that will be with us forever. We are a river town where, as Nicole likes to say, water is not our friend, and causes the most damage to our infrastructure. We're also going to be 200 years old very soon, and so continuing to invest and invest wisely will be important, but we did make a lot of, a lot of progress over two years in that area in spite of everything else. Crime analytics and prevention, so you're aware, we have the BJA grant, we have a crime analyst on staff that's doing great work. We also have idea analytics who's here and doing some really, really interesting things to help PD think differently and align its resources and be very strategic. So while this may not be kind of a specific goal going forward, much like infrastructure investment, it's definitely operationalized, and they're doing some really great things. And then urban revitalization, I remember when this was a council goal, three councils ago now, and we didn't even know how to define it or what we were going to do with it. But we've come a long way. Dream is going into what will be its fourth year, subject to council approval, which is amazing. We've done some really great things in the neighborhoods, and as we talk through ARPA, you know, we'll continue that momentum. But the investment made in the city's historical neighborhoods is something you should all be very, very proud of, and the reception in the community is very positive.
Thank you, Ms. Spiegel. City administrator, so I'll just add one little comment here. Respective of previous councils, obviously, this is a new council, and everybody has their thoughts, but supporting what, especially the last two years of discussion of what has been going on, is, I think, is a big deal, because as we do, we're the policy folks, and we set the tone. Once we decide something, they go execute it and they run with it, as you saw with many of the things, just the newspaper recently, in the last two days, talked about what we're doing, and that we're already doing projects. So to change, especially, I'll just talk about the last council's thoughts, significantly would be a major concern. If there's particulars to that, go talk with them, and that's no big deal, but I just want to kind of just put that out there, that these are historic, wonderful events that have come to fruition because of the good work of people sitting up here the last two years. Continuing that momentum is a big deal. So I just wanted to add that color commentary, and I hope I don't add too much color commentary to you as we go forward. Thank you.
That's okay, we're a team. So one of the things that, it was probably about three councils ago, there was a really big focus on communications, and specifically outbound communication. So we had redone the website, social media was really starting to take hold in its engagement with how we inform the public, but that, it will always be something we focus on. And so one of the things that the communications team has done, and done a truly fantastic job on, we started in 2020 with quarterly reports, which then, thanks to the volume of work, became monthly reports, and are still, you know, usually eight to 10 pages even on a monthly basis, but to show how proud we are of all of the things that are happening in our community. And so we always have a theme for the year-end report, which is usually published kind of through the month of December and then formally in January. So for 2020, we focused on resiliency, I think we all know why, but when we closed out last year, we talked about 25 days of partnerships. As you're coming through recovery, the amount of connectivity in our community is great. These are sent to you, obviously, by Sarah, monthly, they are on the website, we push them out to social media, but it's really great to be able to look back and share with your constituents as well, all of the progress that is being made on all the different initiatives in the city. So the next couple slides, we're not here to talk in detail about them, but to the mayor's point of momentum, these are carryover initiatives. So the previous council did approve an ARPA plan, and that was really direction to staff to start moving forward on all of these different initiatives, which even on your agenda this cycle, we are marching these projects forward, and we will continue to do so, and we will continue to talk issue by issue as they come up. And then there are the things we don't know that are going to come up, that just land in our lap. So the, the... Oh, Alderman, on.
I'm just curious, with the new ruling that's out, they all still qualify?
Yep, so Mallory and her team are going through final rules, so Treasury released final rule, but based on my cursory review, we had a very good moral compass when we started it.
Perfect.
So that's, that's good.
Thanks.
So the map on the left is CP. I think we've, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to ask, what is the, it's not published, but did you, but I...
So just so I have some kind of idea, and I appreciate Director, keeps calling you Merritt. Merritt, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
So there are, there are two documents on Treasury's page, you can read them at your leisure. It's federal bureaucracy in its finest. So the image is here, the one on the left is CP, and I think, you know, the mayor and I have been having conversations with Public Works and other governments. We actually had a conference call with the city in the Chicagoland suburbs this week. We're all marching down this unknown territory together, but there may be some strategies that we bring forward to you, kind of, we'll call it part defense, part offense with this, but we know the impact to our community will be great. We don't know what that is today, and we don't know how or when it's going to come, but this is very much an initiative that, six months ago, I didn't plan on having on this presentation, and as we've learned anything in the past couple of years, this is just kind of how the world works for us. And then on the, oh, go ahead.
So just so everybody here knows, I don't know, every other day, I'm having a conversation about that with some person much higher than us. As you can see on that map, there's one conduit there. From all that crap at the top and all that crap at the bottom, there's one spot, and that's here. So know that the Senate, our U.S. senators, many Department of Transportation folks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we got, we're working those, we're working those serious. So this will be probably one of the biggest things I'm after, so just so you know. Thank you.
And the graphic on the right, the infrastructure bill, we know there's a lot of money, we know the money has buckets, we have no idea how those buckets are going to translate to us, but like with many grant opportunities and programmatic opportunities, I know, Mayor, we've already started talking at ByState about if there's more STBG funds, how that program rolls out, but again, this will take significant staff time through our partners with our consultants in DC to understand where we can, where we can achieve the best leverage for our community. But both of these, we're not really on the radar, and Public Works, boy, they have their hands full now. So I will transition from where we are to where this council would like to go. You went through kind of the goal-setting process, this was probably, from a staff perspective, the easiest one, there seemed to be the strongest consensus from your initial submissions, but on this specific slide, there were two things that 10 of you submitted on your initial submission, and I don't think either is surprising, at least from my vantage point. But neighborhood-level infrastructure, there were a lot of feedback in your comments about neighborhood streets, of course, that's, that's always important. Alley's, and alley's has become, become evolving over the past couple of years, and I think that's good. Traffic calming, and then sidewalks. So if you think about the connectivity between the neighborhoods and our, and our larger infrastructure system, there seemed to be, I would say, nearly unanimous consensus with the council on that being a priority. And then public safety with a specific focus on policing, again, not a surprise there, but kind of the theme of your comments tied to public safety response, and we've talked a lot about that recently. Staffing, from both the attracting law enforcement officials to the retention of the ones we have, and then we've also talked about succession planning, as we have an aging force who are going to retire at some point, making sure that we have really strong leadership in place to assume those roles. Community engagement and that relationship between law enforcement and the community, and that has a whole bunch of different facets to it, and then, I would say, most importantly in some ways, crime reduction. We've, we've gone through some very interesting waves of criminal activity these past couple of years, and PD is working very hard with both our state and federal partners and locally, but, you know, we've, we've seen this wave nationally, and what we can do locally to prevent some of the trauma that's happening in our community is definitely a focused area.
Thank you. I also wanted to add to that, as I was reading through the comments on the goals, there was also, how can we provide support to the police for things where non-sworn officers are not required? Parades, technicians for evidence, that kind of thing, and I just didn't want to get that lost, because several of the council people added that in there, including myself.
So Alderwoman Lee, that's a great point. I would, I would put that in staffing and kind of the evolution of service delivery, and actually, it's, it's interesting that you brought that up. One of the things that we're going to start talking about, kind of with Courtney, is how we've handled special events. We can't do it that way anymore. We literally do not have the resources for both police and fire, and the burden on Public Works is significant also. And so we, we need to think differently about some things, and I think you, you have the commitment of staff to do that. That is going to come with some, some strain and pressure from the other side of, but we've always done it that way, and we're comfortable with that. And now you've increased our costs, or, and we saw it with the fair, actually, last year, this exact conversation. So it's definitely on our radar. I would give strong kudos to the chief and the major, and they understand that there are specific positions, that it may be easier to attract civilian talent, and, you know, think about all the computer forensic work that our CID Bureau does now, and so those are the conversations we're actively having. But at the end of the day, we also need to make sure we have minimum staffing on our streets, and that is really priority number one. So Mayor, I don't know if you want to kind of do your part of this slide.
So, no, you did wonderful. I, everybody knows, I mean, I don't, I think you could probably walk out to most folks around town and ask them, and there you go, right? Fix my streets, and where are the police? I mean, those are the things, right? And so as we continue to do this, again, you're going to hear me say it over and over and over, so I'll apologize and just keep using this word, the momentum. We know this, the previous council and staff worked on it. I gather from the new council, both folks that have been here and new folks, this is what we do, right? As a priority. As Alderwoman Lee mentioned, there might be a couple other ways of tackling some things differently, roger that, but I still fully believe, at least my job and I think some of ours, is to see, and the staff's challenging them, how can we find resources and tools and things to help the people that we have do their job better or more effectively? I'm not going to put a badge on, I don't think, and I certainly, the chief would probably like, you know, want me to put in a room somewhere, but we don't do those things, right? They do. So what can we provide and find different ways and methods, and this council? So you know, the previous staff and council working together with many partners outside of Davenport, Iowa, have gathered a lot of help, and we're going to continue to do that, and, and, but when people ask, what are you doing? That, that's what, now, there's going to be others she's going to talk about here in a second, and we do tons of other stuff, but that's what we do, so. Is that what you wanted me to say?
Perfect. So this next slide is where there's moderate consensus, so more, more than one of you brought up, kind of these general areas. And so while we talked where there was strong consensus, and I think the, the council focuses, this might look a little different than how the goals were structured just based on some of these carryover items, what, what I would propose for the moderate consensus items is these, while they may not rise, and you may pick one or two of them that rises to, the council decides that this is a initiative that the council wants to focus on as a council goal, what I would say for this entire list is, all of these will be in the city administrator's work plan, either as carryover or focus areas anyway, so that these items are already built in, it's whether or not you want to elevate them to the, the council really wants to focus on this, knowing kind of what those carryover initiatives are in, in infrastructure and police.
And I just wanted to add, I put a lot of things in the environmental one, but one of them was the flood plan phase one, so where it says three on our little summary, it's actually four, okay? So that raises it a little higher. And the North Park, I also included that in the commercial corridor, so that raises that one a little higher, too.
Yep, and so what I would say of these moderate consensus items is they're all in our work plan. So urban revitalization, obviously, there's been a tremendous amount of work done there, and will continue to be through Dream and our CDBG projects and the ARPA plan. The flood plan, we've talked about implementing that first phase. North Park Mall, we've talked about. Affordable and workforce housing, we continue to talk about. The commercial corridor revitalization, that one has, has kind of come and gone as opportunities arise, but is obviously important, especially to those neighborhoods where those nodes matter. And then riverfront development, mainstream landing. So my perspective on these is they're all in the work plan, whether or not you raise one up to a, one or two up to a council priority is obviously your prerogative, but know that everything here will show up in the city administrator's work plan when that's presented to you.
Just a note on the mall, this was one of my priorities that I had put in as well. You know, this is a once-in-a-lifetime change, the way that shopping is done, and so cities all across America are facing this, and if we can set a really good example of this is how we do it, we will not only attract people, but we will attract the people who want to attract those people. So, you know, making a pitch to maybe elevate this, but that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a question, a scope question on North Park Mall and the commercial corridor. We all know that the North Brady area is a problem as well, and it's pretty closely tied geographically to the North Park Mall. Is there any way, recognizing that we're not going to change the zoning of that, of the North Brady, is there any way that those two things can be combined in the minds and actions of staff as we move forward?
So it's a great question. I would argue that the reason we, when we brought the zoning forward for the mall, the rezoning, we called it city center, is because it's literally main and main. I mean, Kimberly and Brady, if you look at the city of Davenport at the 30,000-foot, it is the center of our city. The ownership consistency of the mall is something that exists nowhere else, with the exception of maybe THF up on Elmore. So I would argue that a hub-and-spoke mentality is probably more appropriate... So I would argue that a hub-and-spoke mentality is probably more appropriate, because, well, you'll make the argument that North Brady is tied, and it very much is. West Kimberly is equally tied, and revitalizing and making sure the West Walmart area stays vibrant. And East Kimberly, where it turns south into, you know, and in that case, Decker and I talk a lot about what happens at the old Hobby Lobby and Schnucks, ties into what we want to happen around Sam's. And so I would think of it more as a hub-and-spoke. They're both important. The strategies are entirely different. How you try to take a bite of the elephant that is a redeveloping mall property, when you talk about the scale and how that gets financed and what the land use opportunities are, is a very different strategy than what we might deploy to redevelop the former Hotel Davenport site, or what we want to happen around Menards, or even look at what happened with Fresh Time for the council that was here when that redevelopment happened. They're very different tools and very different audiences, but they need to complement each other, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's really what I'm hoping for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been around for eight years, and I'm going to say it again, let's not forget Rockingham.
You won't let us. I'm confident. All right. So any else on kind of the moderate consensus? My approach to that was to make sure they were all in the work plan, but, you know, we'll march them forward without maybe the same focus that policing and infrastructure has.
I guess since you did a last call, the one thing on my mind is this page is predominantly things that are going to require a public-private partnership. And as a council, sometimes these are the most fun ones to think that we get to lift the hood and create something, but we really need to focus on where the marketplace wants to take these and just make sure that we're setting the table for somebody to realize the best possible version of what they can bring to us. So, and then as far as which one gets elevated, again, some of that's just going to be opportunistic as to who comes to the table and who has the magic idea.
Not to go twice, but when we talk about public-private partnership, let's make sure it's a true public-private partnership, not somebody that comes to us with $10,000 and wants 10 million. So, thank you.
I hope you have confidence that staff is very good about due diligence and reminding you not to settle. We've had those conversations in the past about, just because someone is here with a good idea doesn't mean it's a good idea for right now in our community.
And so I'll add to that, thank you. On these, I would ask all of us, as we get ideas, because people come to us thinking we're the action people, and we're not the action people, we're the tell-them-to-action people, right? Do some good work with them when we all get, and I'm as guilty as any of, probably more on this particular issue, to work and make sure we can execute this in a way that when and if it comes to you guys, we have an idea and plan on how to execute, instead of it comes to you guys, or it comes to the council meeting, and then we have a big, I'll say discussion, there's other words I lose, about something that maybe can't even happen, right? So let's do our diligence with them before. And I'm as guilty, and I have to work on that as much as anyone. Thank you.
For you, city administrator, for the ones that only had one, and there's some really good ones in there, okay? The Adopt and Implement the Parks Master Plan from Alderman Ortiz, some of the environmental stuff, I mean, that was mine, the retention of businesses. Those things we can still move forward on, even though one council came up with it, or...
You jumped ahead, I mean, one slide.
Oh! Excuse me. Okay.
So, thanks for the tease and the lead-in. All right. That was a good hook. So other submissions, and I went back and forth and consulted on, what do I call this slide, right? Because there are things that all of you submitted, and we agreed that full transparency, everything that got submitted got shared. What I would call this slide is the things that are already baked in to what we're doing, or, and I'll, we'll use the OX site phase two, right? That's a project that will come forward, probably with or without council saying it's a priority, because it's an operational necessity for us. So I kind of put them in two buckets. The left side is who we are and what we do. It is baked into, if you go back to that original slide of the operational pillars, balanced budget, Mallory's not going to bring you anything but, because legally we can't. Don't reinvent the wheel, that gets to the mayor's conversation of we've, the council has set its momentum, we have a good plan, keep going forward. Customer service, yes, we can always get better, and we talk about that, but, you know, you have the commitment of staff to do that. Community events, when we can do them safely and have fun again, it'll be great. But that's going to be very important, and an important part of the conversation with CP and our riverfront also. And then obviously supporting our small businesses coming through the pandemic's been a very hard thing. So those things are baked into everything we do every day, and it's just a good reminder that they're important to the council. The right side were things that were a little different, but I would go back to probably either baked into everything we do or going to be in the work plan. So OX site phase two will be part of a project we're going to move forward. Adopting and implementing the Parks Plan, I'm really excited for Parks this next couple of years between ARPA and how they're investing. I think there is a really, really great chapter ahead for some of the investment we're going to make, especially at the neighborhood level and the regional level. That is, we're going to look back and be very proud. I am very excited for that one. The Davenport Schools Partnership, and so without Alderman Kelly here, I'll talk a little bit about that. We've, is he, okay. We've come a long way in our relationship in the school district, I would say, really in the past two, three years, and are working on a lot of really great things. So as I shared with you in my memo, both staff is participating, they're doing a facility master plan right now, and that's a really, really big thing. And while it's not going to be within the council's purview as a goal, it is very much a project that is going to impact our community. And so Sarah and I both have kind of appointed roles from the school district to participate in that process, along with parents who are involved through every, everything. Alderman Kelly specifically had talked about career partnerships, and, you know, that was, the mayor and I had met with President Gosa and Superintendent Schneckloff earlier this week, and we talked specifically about, there are really great, the fight for workforce is real everywhere. I mean, that, pick a newspaper, pick a headline, it's there. And it's going to be there for a while. But from our standpoint, the idea of serving your community, and I don't care if it's a police officer, a firefighter, a solid waste driver, or a nurse, the careers and the fields that have the most strain are those who most directly serve the public right now. And the school feels that with teachers, too. And so the idea that we can go in and we can go in early, and that's what we talked about, introducing ideas at high schools way too late at this point, especially career ideas, getting that exposure early to the kids about, we, as a city, to serve your community, have some amazing careers, but partnering with the school district and in that exposure and creating those positive environments for the kids.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, and not jumping necessarily in on this, but, you know, also recognizing that, and none of this has been said, but it hasn't been said today, that with ARPA, which is a huge elephant in itself, and now possibly rail, I think we need to be very careful as a council about coming up with another bright idea, or another direction, because I think, you know, ARPA's got a time clock on it, we all know that, and I think we're doing a great job as a city to get, starting to get these things launched. But those, we really have to spend that money well and make sure we get it spent. And so I'm going to be, I'm going to try to be very careful about not doing that thing as well, because I really think, we've also got the flood plan now underway, that doesn't just happen magically, that has to be managed, so many, many things. When I looked at that list at the beginning, there were three of those that were not even, when I came on council four years ago, the flood plan, the juvenile justice, and there was one other that we hadn't, wasn't even dreamed of when I came on three years ago. And now there's, it keeps getting bigger. So I just would urge just as a council to keep that in mind over the next couple of years, and really the next three years, because we don't know what else might, there might be other opportunities coming with the infrastructure even. So we've got to get this, it's like airplanes taking off, sort of. That's the way it feels like, and we've got to get them all off so we can make room for the other ones that are coming in, the opportunities there. Thank you.
So if I can just touch on the last one, and then the floor shall be yours. So the environmental, energy, and climate, I put that one here for two reasons. One, it is baked into a lot of what we do. It might not always feel that way because it doesn't have this shiny title, and that's not the story we lead with. But I will say, being good stewards is the lens that your staff always uses. And that can be good financial stewards, that can be good operational stewards, and that can be good environmental stewards. And so we try to balance those things. There might be some really novel, cool things out there, and we were talking with the mayor yesterday on this one, specifically when we bring Station 3 for you, it will be designed with sustainability in mind. We will not be pursuing a LEED certification, because that ends up causing us more problems than it's worth, because we want to be good operational stewards and good financial stewards. And so on that one, I would say, in many ways, it's baked into the other six. There are good things environmentally we do in the neighborhoods, and that means different things. What we did with the Black Hawk Foundry was fantastic. And so for me, this slide was about the, don't forget about these things, but remember that it's woven into everything else, and to probably promote better. I would say that's the opportunity we have, as we do all these things, and I think as your staff, because we're moving at, the control tower is very busy, we forget to share some of the so whats along the way. And so I think that's a, that's a good opportunity for both staff and the council to remember that, you know, when we do some of these things, the partnership with the school, we just meet with them, we do these, we have these ideas, we're moving them forward. And I think we take for granted that sharing that information could go a long way.
And I just, I want to build on what you just said, because we, as a council, are going to be voting on a project on Wednesday that is a partnership with a school, that is an environmental project, fixing up part of Silver Creek over behind the National Guard area over by Wisconsin. And it's going to be tied into a place where students can go and learn about the environment. So it's a great project, it hit the consent, I'm very pleased, and I just wanted to give kudos, because that's an excellent example of what you were just talking about for several of these things. And we're voting out on a Wednesday. Yay. Kudos to PW.
Thank you. So there's no more comments particular to what the city administrators talked about here. I just, so I had a couple of other pieces. So I think we should hopefully be pretty proud of what we're doing, both at a policy level, at an action, make-it-happen level, at a citizen, giving us advice level. I think we're really good about taking folks' input, trying to maneuver and meld it into something that we can deal with, understanding that maybe, maybe we can't do every single thousand thing that comes to fruition, you know, people want us to take to fruition. But through these things that are set in policy and then executed into a work plan, I'm very proud, and I think talking with other folks around, certainly around the state, certainly around the Quad Cities, this place you call Davenport is leading the way in like everything. The next, you know, we talk, we're going to go into budget. And again, leading the way in how we do business with people's money, leading the way in how we do business with infrastructure, or floods, or whatever. I will go back to, when I first was on council many years ago, went to a flood thing in New Orleans, and they talk about all the things that went on with Katrina, et cetera. But the one thing they brought up numerous times is how Davenport deals with a flood, and how they, how we work with the river. Well, then they were talking about, well, maybe you come up with some idea, and here we are, the citizens have been talking about that since 1965 with that flood, and every council since, and you, this council, previous council, have said make flood resiliency and mitigation a priority, put a plan in it, and we're doing that with consultants. So the things that are brought to us, we execute upon them, we are cognizant of the money, we know public safety is a priority, and we do everything, I think, in our power as best as we can to seek out new ways, to bring tools and things to this city to work. So I'll use one analogy, just jumping on what Alderwoman McGinnis said a little bit. I think the city administrator was talking about the aircraft and taking off in the cor- I'll use a smaller one on the ground. We're getting after some people in a car chase, and we put out the rumble strips, and it stops everything, hopefully. We don't want to put out rumble strips, all right? We're a track meet, and we've come out of the starting gate, and we're really running with some stuff. We don't want to be that kid that runs across the track because mom wasn't watching him and screws the thing up. We want to be the person that carries that momentum and gets this thing going, and we should be very proud of what we're doing, and these next two years should be pretty awesome. So anybody else on what we've talked about so far? Very good.
So I, does, I don't know if Alderman Kelly's on, or Alderman Grip, if they want to...
Anybody, Mr. Kelly or Mr. Grip, do you have comments?
I am on, and I do not. I don't have any comments either.
So then my next step with a newly seated council, so every year we always approve a work plan after the budget work session, so sometime in February, March, we'll bring forward a motion accepting the city administrator's work plan for the year. We'll do the same with the council goals. So my proposal would be that kind of the carryover initiatives are one goal, and I get they're very big ones within there, but then with that first slide with infrastructure and public safety kind of being the three primary initiatives of this council. And then with acknowledgement that everything else finds its way to the work plan. So that would be my proposal to bring forward for your action, kind of formalizing what we've talked about on this. That sounds reasonable.
Cool. Questions on that? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Switching gears. I said this was one of the easiest ones. So we are going to transition. It's the fun time of year where staff gets to write 21, 22, and 23 at all different times, depending on what we're doing. So next Saturday, we will start the kickoff with the budget process. You have your handy-dandy paperweights already. But so next Saturday, we do operating. Mallory and her team will lead that, so you kind of get the Government Finance 101 presentation, which is always fun. The update, which you got a sneak preview of as we closed out 21 from the auditors, and Mallory and her team this week, and then an overall operating budget. Just for context, while we know the city is in really great financial position, and we've talked upstairs a little bit that we didn't get here easily, there were a lot of decisions made many years ago, and continuously to the theme of marching forward. So my direction to the staff was really nothing new. We right-sized some things in supplies and services and did our contractual obligations, but you won't see a request for new positions or things like that, because we want to be good stewards. We know the rollback, the state took action on that. We know while the federal government gave us a whole lot of inducements, those are not sustainable, and we shouldn't expect those again. So you will see what I would consider to be a fairly flat budget, very, very intentionally. So just kind of steal Mallory's thunder there. And then capital, I think, is always one of the more lively ones that you guys have when you start talking about what. But again, staff's lens on that is focusing on basic infrastructure, which we've done for many years. And then on the right is kind of how your budget binders are built. So did I miss anything? All right. CFO says I did. All right. So that's all I have.
So the one thing I'll add, as we go into the next two weekends with the budget, if during your, you know, intensive reading of this, of hours and hours, something really big, particular is of concern, I'd ask before you come to the meeting, get a heads-up from the good CFO's staff, so there's some context. At least let them know, especially a little thing, fine, but if it's a big concern, let them know what your concern is, so they can have the research and information for you, especially for all of us, ahead of time, because we're going to, you know, there is a rule, we have to finalize the budget and approve it and get it to the state and do all that. So if there's big discussions, and I don't anticipate there would be, but if there are, work with the staff ahead of time, so we're not punting or pushing back the timeframes that we are expecting to execute with. So that's my only guidance. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anything for the good of the order? Miss, sorry, city administrator for your staff? Anybody on staff otherwise? I'll just, it's kind of unusual, but anybody on other staff? Okay. Counsel? Pausing. Have a wonderful weekend.